Okay, at this time, any public comments with items not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. At this time, the planning board would like to welcome our interim town planner, Betsy Ware. Welcome, Betsy.
Thank you.
Impressive resume. I look forward with working with you for the time.
Well, I look forward to working with this board and, as I said in a memo to you, I grew up in this town. And my mother, I lived here on and off until my mother passed in 1995. So, great community, great place to grow up, and I'm looking forward to working with the board.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled for seven. Before that, we have a few housekeeping things on the recodification. The number one thing, Sarah, senior housing section vote to correct numbering error on 9.4.
I don't think we need to do that anymore, do we?
No, that was brought up.
Yeah, I think we're leaving at 9.6 in case the other things don't happen. Greg, isn't that correct?
No, we do need to correct. So it was nine, originally said 9.3, and we need to change that to 9.4.
Oh, 9.4, okay. The motion needs to say... I'm trying to figure out where it says 9.3.
So the original motion, an article that you approved, had 9.3 as the new section. And it should say 9.4, which we had corrected on the materials. But you just need to make that formal vote to acknowledge that the original...
I'm looking at the motion right here. It says 9.4.
I think it was changed prior to before.
Well, it's changed.
We have to vote to do it, that's all.
Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. So, sorry.
Somebody make the motion.
I make a motion that we change the motion for Article 13 to add a new section 9.4 instead of 9.3.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes.
Sir only.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
And Ms. Felicio?
Yes.
And chair votes yes, 7-0. Not 6-0, sorry. Any other housekeeping items before we talk?
Two other housekeeping items, or one housekeeping and one proposal. We needed to send a, the planning board needs to send a report to the town moderator or the board of select... Select Board to just indicate our work. And so I put it, I totally forgot about this. We totally forgot about this. So it is in your packet this afternoon, but it's a compilation of the cricket article we approved last week. And just the, exactly the front matter of each section here, which is basically the open house material with the edits that were errors, like... So, that's, there's really, it's just a procedural thing. So I'd like a motion to accept the planning board report. If you want, I can pull it up and share it, but it's in the folder.
Alan has his hand up.
I'll make that motion.
So I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Wilson, you have a comment?
I was just gonna say this is a statutory requirement under Chapter 48, Section 5. And I've reviewed the report that Sarah drafted, and it looks fine to me, satisfies the statute.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any further discussion? Ms. Foley?
I did not see it in the packet.
It didn't go till this afternoon. I can show it to you.
And then my, my second point is, my understanding is the planning board was supposed to do a report before we handed it off to the select board. Is that correct?
That I don't know.
I can answer that. The statutory requirement is something that used to be reported in time to be available at town meeting. I don't think there's a requirement that it be submitted to the select board prior to that.
Yeah, I mean, can you, is it in the folder now?
It is in the folder now. I can't get into the folder.
You will, can you?
But I can. It's a talk, well, if you just do modified, it's Planning Board Report to the Town, PDF. So I can read the front matter of the Manchester. It's basically what we approved for the cricket article. Exactly. Then Laura edited with our support. Planning and Board has voted to present a number of changes to zoning bylaws at the special town meeting. The Board has been working on for more than three years, is weren't working on, should say, for more than three years. The Select Board voted to recommend all the articles. Here's a brief summary of the key proposed changes. Pro changes clarify and update a number of provisions. They will strengthen and broaden a number of types of oversight. Moving, sorry, it's micro font here. Moving certain provisions for junk cars, curb cuts, driveway entrances and stormwater management with general bylaws, where they have broader applicability, and reducing performance-based requirements to bolster site plan review processes that's required for special permits. It provides for new small housing accommodations, which is in-law apartments, to be created inside existing single-family homes. Such housing will be subject to greater regulations and allowed by right to meet certain criteria. The cap is set at 20 new housing units per year. Three, allowing the opportunity for senior housing facilities within Manchester, within neighborhood input and rigorous site plan review by special permit. Four, allow certain changes to existing homes that do not comply with zoning. About two-thirds of the homes in Manchester, as long as setback and other dimensional requirements are met. Modify existing residential conservation bylaw to allow it in every district by special permit, including site plan review, and to eliminate the five-acre parcel minimum. Strengthen and update our bylaws and align with the goals identified through significant town input collected in master plan. Summary follows. And then I have, I just took the section, front matter for each section and changed the font.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote on accepting the motion on the plan. Ms. Felicio?
No.
Ms. Foley?
I'd like to review it, so I'm gonna abstain right now.
Ms. Grayton?
Yes.
Yes.
And chair votes yes, so it's 4-2, 4-1, and one abstention. Thank you. Any other housekeeping items on recodification before I talk about these motions moving and seconding?
I had one. So I don't know if you got my email. There's links on the town website for the proposed articles that go to old bylaws that we did, like in April and May. So it was, it's pre our modifications that we've been doing over the past few months. So it's very confusing. I've had different residents come up to me saying different things, and I didn't know what they were talking about. We were talking about swimming pools, and they're saying, you know, that it's still going to the building inspector. And I said, "No, no, no, we took that out." And so I went to the website, and they're just going to a different link. So I'm concerned that residents aren't getting the actual articles.
Well, I think the question would be, in terms of legal, would be the warrant goes to the right articles, and I checked that.
The warrant articles aren't live.
They're not what?
Oh, you can't click on them.
But you can copy it.
I can't. I mean, I could type it.
I think, to be fair, there's a section on the recodification website that links to the correct articles. It just depends which link you're clicking on.
So why don't we remove the bad link that takes us to the old, well, we should talk to Tiffany in the morning.
Is there a reason why the warrant articles aren't live? They're blue.
I don't know. We didn't do them.
I mean, I don't have any conversation, so, I mean, that's out of my control. You and Chris are...
On the links to the warrant articles, make sure they become, they get live.
I checked when they were live.
They haven't been live for me for the past couple weeks, but...
I don't think they've ever been live.
No.
Well, the planning board website certainly has the correct one, appears to have the correct one.
The warrant articles.
Yeah, but that, and it says motion for Article 4.
So if you go to the town meeting link and you go to this warrant articles. So these are not live, so if you try to link to these...
Okay, so the links within the articles on the documents are not live.
And then there's the other issue on the zoning recodification website with...
So you would need to have to copy it and put it into your browser.
So the warrant is correct, though.
All right, well, let's, let's see if we can live, get those live tomorrow. Anything else? Any other, so before we start the hearing, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the moving, seconding, and speaking on each motion responsibility. I thought about this, and I've come up with the following people to speak. And I can take comments from the board on this, but Articles 4 through 7, Sarah will move, and I will second. Article 8, I would have Chris move, and I would second. Article 9, Sarah, and I would second. Article 10 and 11, Chris, and I would second. Article 12, Sarah, and I would second. And 13, 14, 15, and 16, Chris, and I would second.
Ron, can I ask you to just do that again?
I will send you, I will email you this tonight. And... I have it, I have a, I'll send you an email with it.
Could you just repeat them for me?
Okay, let me repeat them. 4 through 7, Sarah. 8, Chris. 9, Sarah. 10, 11, Chris. 12, Sarah. 13, 14, 15, 16, Chris. All seconded by me.
Thank you.
Okay, any further, any more discussion?
May I ask why there was no discussion on that?
I decided this would be the best, best people to speak, to get success on what we're proposing. I think I chose the people that done the most work and can speak on this. I think it makes sense. Two board members did not vote for the warrant, so I didn't think that would be germane. And then one board member has been not showing up, so I thought these were the best people.
Okay.
That was my thinking.
I have one other zoning issue that I'd like to raise. I know that we have a lot to do, these tabs, and we've worked hard on this. But I have asked, and I know Alan would like to have this, believes that this may not go, get completed in one night. I'm hoping that he's wrong. But I think it's in the towns' and the voters' best interest that we work to have it be completed in one night, to the extent that we can, with the moderators allowing a discussion and so forth. So I'd like to make a motion that, that we authorize the chair to pass over motions after 10:00 PM. Make a motion to pass over motions after 10:00 PM at the November 14th town meeting, if he feels that it's in the best interest of the goals of the zoning recodification effort. So that's basically suggesting that Ron could make a decision, particularly as the meeting goes late. If we only have a couple things left, rather than bring people back for a second day, it would be up to him to say, you know, we'll move it off till spring. Now, take them out of order, not do anything else, just move through them and then potentially move to pass over in the interest of respect for people's time.
So I have a question about that. Does the second day pose any risks or problems? Why would we want to?
Well, the second day, I think that, I'll let Alan answer that. Let me, my thought is, after 10:00 PM, if we're only on, still on Article 4, and we would want to go to a second day to get important things done. I mean, Article 4, hopefully it'll be further along than that. But if the first three articles take a long time, we could be only at Article 6 or 8 at 10:30 PM. It's, it's difficult to know where we'll be.
The second day is, the question is always whether you get a quorum. That's always the first.
Right, so then I guess maybe Alan can...
Alan, would you speak on the second day and possible issues?
Well, there are a number of issues. I should mention that I have a letter that is now posted on the town website to the voters, and it'll be published in the Cricket on Friday, saying that my expectation is, given the warrant as it stands now, if we try to do all the articles, we will probably need two nights. And if so, if it becomes apparent that we'll need two nights, I don't intend to keep us late into the wee hours on Monday, but we'll adjourn at a reasonable time, or we'll propose to adjourn at a reasonable time. This is subject to the voters' decision to reconvene. There is the risk that we might not get a quorum for a second night. Or whether on the second night, it might be a very different group of voters than we have for the first night. So it's really hard to predict what the circumstances will be. But if it becomes obvious that we need two nights, I don't think we should try to press on until midnight or later on the first night.
May I think, my hope is that we can get it done in one night. The issues seem to be, the policy issues seem to be matters of opinion rather than... So people will state their opinions, and then the voters decide. So my proposal is that we authorize the chair to pass over motions after 10:00 PM on November 14th town, at November 14th town meeting, if he feels that it's in the best interest of the goals of the zoning recodification effort. It gives, that's the only way, besides specifically targeting a particular article, that we can move to pass over. So it gives us the latitude, it gives Ron the latitude to decide to pass over something after 10:00 PM.
Let me just interject for a moment. You stated the motion, your motion correctly the first time. It got a little muddled the second time. It would authorize Ron to move to pass over.
Right.
The decision to pass over is ultimately in the hands of the meeting.
I guess I'm not clear. Are you, are you saying for the planning board chair to move to not go to the second night? Or to, I'm not understanding.
So I'm thinking, it's 11:30, people are drifting out, and we have one article left. Rather than bringing back people the next night, we might, Ron could make a decision as chair to push it off to, you know, whenever we decide, April, or some other time. So, so we move to pass over, that we make a motion to pass over. And as Alan said, if the meeting wants to discuss it, then they would vote no to pass over. We would stay or take it up the next night. I just wanted, I was just, I'm just trying to give us some flexibility, because absent that, it's, it's my opinion, that we as a board have voted to put them forward. And we have no public meeting to decide to pull them back. So therefore, we're committing to a sec, to a second night if the discussion goes long. We're committing to either stay late, you know, stay till they're done, or do a second night without some provision to pass over that has been endorsed by us. Otherwise, we've all voted, we have, we've all voted, the board, majority of the board has voted to push these things forward. So that's my, that's my, I'm just trying to give us a little bit of flexibility. I trust that Ron has good judgment and...
So at 10 o'clock, you'll...
No, after 10 o'clock, anytime after, so... It just means that he can't decide at 8 o'clock. I'm trying to balance...
If we're close to the end, I'd like to, you know, finish it up, if Alan would allow it.
Right.
I didn't think Alan wanted it to go past 10. Right, is that, is that the call?
I didn't hear that.
I thought I've heard you maybe at a board of select meeting that you didn't want it to go past 10. There was a reasoning for the second night.
I started thinking about the time to adjourn at about 10. What I've said in my letter is that I don't intend to keep us to an unreasonable hour, and I'll try to adjourn by 10:30 if, at that point, it's obvious that we're gonna need a second night. The decision is the voters', not mine. But my experience over a very long time is that anything we try to do past 11 becomes a real mess. People are cranky, they wanna go home, they're tired. They will have been at it for more than four hours at that point. It's just not a good idea to be trying to decide on significant substantive issues much after 11 o'clock.
I have a question, can I take?
I will, I will start thinking about whether it's appropriate to adjourn and move to a second night at about 10, depending on where we are.
Can, can anyone move to pass over an article, or can, or does it have to be?
Yes.
Well, no, but you're, the first, you recognize the planning board for the main motion.
Yes.
And so if the main motion has been made, then Chris can't, if I've made the main motion for Article 14, or whoever Chris is making it, I can't then pass over that.
No, you can't, and I won't. Once, early in my tenure, I allowed a motion to pass over as an amendment to a main motion to take affirmative action, and it was a disaster, and I promised myself I would never do it again. So once the main motion is made, it's, the motion to pass over is not in order. I thought Chris was just asking a general question, whether anybody could make a motion to pass over.
But I guess, I guess my, my presumption is that Ron has listed who's gonna list the motions, and the agreement on the part of the board is that, that Chris and I would follow the board's voted recommendation to move these forward. I mean, it would seem to be very much out of a bad, a bad form for me to decide on my own to make a motion to pass over something.
So essentially, what we're doing here is authorizing the chairman to act on our behalf.
Right.
To pass over some of the articles.
If he deems it's in the best, if it's in the interest of the goals of the zoning recodification effort, which I think we've been fairly clear about clarity, updating, master plan. I can add those. The goals of the master, to provide clarity, to provide administrative updates, and to follow the recommendations of the master plan.
I guess, I guess my only concern with that is, 'cause I trust Ron to do the right thing, is that I'm wondering if it interferes kind of with the town meeting process in the sense that residents show up anticipating that we're gonna go through all the articles, whether it's one night or two nights, and then it becomes the decision of the chair to not do that. So I'm wondering if we're, we're shortchanging the residents in any way.
Well, it's not his, not his decision, he's just making a motion to clear up.
And then it goes to a vote, right?
Yes, exactly.
It only happens by a vote of the meeting, so, so I don't think you're shortchanging the voters at all. I'll frankly be amazed if anyone is disappointed not to have a second night.
I would suggest two things. I don't see any reason to limit it to 10:00 PM. There's no real reason to do that. It might be appropriate at 9:30, I don't know. There's no reason to put a time limit in there, and it's also, is it, would we be giving you, I'm in favor of this, but maybe you might choose to move, pass over 13 and 14 and jump to 15. So I think whatever motions you choose, you could, I would authorize you to make the motion to pass over, whatever those are, 'cause between now and then, you may develop some ideas, and go ahead.
I thought we just said that part of that motion was we wouldn't jump around.
Well, I think the jumping around could be that you would pass over, for example, ADUs, just as a, for example, 15, and take up the two shorter ones of 15 and 16, as a, for instance.
I don't know how, but I feel about that. I feel like then we might be cherry picking, so...
Yeah, then, then things seems like orchestrated behind the scenes, and that makes me nervous.
I, I mean, your statement that we weren't gonna skip and move things around.
Well, I said not, we're not gonna reorder them. It's my, my recommendation, you know, you could, so...
I was, okay with, until we heard that.
Right, I've made a motion.
So did the motion talk about taking things out of order? 'Cause I'm not sure if I'm okay with that. I haven't thought about it long enough, and...
The motion is not, it does not anticipate one way or the other. It does not specify one way or the other. The motion is, I move that we authorize the chair to make a motion to pass over motions after 10:00 PM. And the reason I said that is because that's the rough time when Alan says he's starting to think about whether we're gonna go to it next night. At the November 14th town meeting, if he feels it's in the best interest of the goals of the zoning recodification effort.
Well, I guess I'll second it.
Yeah, thank you.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Can we add that we won't pass over?
You can make that amendment if you'd like.
Well, I was just trying to have a discussion. If other people felt about it. I wasn't gonna waste time if people were okay with it.
Yeah, my feeling is that I trust Ron, and let's see how it goes, and...
I guess that, but you started out by saying is different than where we ended. So you said that we weren't going to skip over things, and now we did, so...
I said we weren't gonna reorder things.
Well, I think skipping over is reordering.
It's not the same thing. I understand, I understand your point. I understand, I hear your point. I think we just, I'm just trying to give us some flexibility in getting this through this, you know, and not having one thing hanging over till the next night, or three things, or, I don't know, five things. No.
But I think the initial conversation was, we're gonna stop here because it's late, and then we're gonna move to the spring. But now we're going to talk about which ones we think might go through right now, and I think that's a different conversation.
The only thing I would say on that is that the town meeting has to vote and approve whatever we're doing. So it's not like Ron is making a decision on behalf of the town.
Well, he's gonna make the motion to pass over 5, 6, 10, 13, so...
If he does that, then if the town meeting votes to do it, that's fine. If they don't, then it's not gonna pass and we...
I guess, but that's not the conversation we had in the beginning, is what my point is.
Can I, can I just interject, and I think, and perhaps answer Christina's question? There's a difference between passing over and reordering. Under our bylaws, we take up the articles in the order they appear in the warrant, unless the mo, the... unless the mo- the meeting votes to take them in a different order. So reordering means after Article 5, someone moves to take up, instead of Article 6, Article 9. That's reordering.
I think that's, Alan, thank you, but I think that's what happened at the end of the conversation. Sarah says that we're gonna leave the judgment up to Ron to potentially skip over 10, 11, and 12 and jump to 13. So to me, that is reordering.
Well, it is not, it's, it's, he's keeping the same order, but it's passing over some that come next in order to get to those that come later.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Stroming?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Foley?
No.
Ms. Delicio?
No.
And I guess, do I have a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, it's, uh, 4-2.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. We're a little behind now, um. Okay, well, before I open the public hearing, uh, just for, um, the audience, um, just to respect all participants, whether you disagree or not, no negative in- influences or attacks. Please keep your remarks focused on specific topics. And please refrain from repeating questions. So the process will be, I'll open the hearing, we'll hear from the applicant, we'll hear from the board, we'll hear from the public. We'll deliberate, I'll get a sense from the board whether they wanna vote tonight or on this, or need for a continuous, uh, continuance. If not, I'll close the public hearing and make a motion to vote. After that, we'll have someone write the decision, but I think, I think you volunteered to do that. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on a special permit application for a site plan approval for Crocker's Boatyard. Public hearing, you notice, has been duly advertising the cricket as follows, in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 11, the Manchester By the Sea Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 9th at 7 P.M. This is a hybrid meeting with public participation via Zoom to consider the application of Crocker's Boatyard to install and reconfigure floating docks and to create a marina reconfiguration zone at their facility located in Manchester Harbor. This, this is in accordance with Section 7.5 and 4.1.10J of the current bylaw. This is to add additional slip areas to the existing docks extending towards the harbor channel. Uh, the board has received responses from the police chief, harbor master, and the codcom were all made part of this record. No, no fur- no responses have been received from any of the other boards. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Susan St. Pierre on behalf of the applicant for Crocker's Boatyard.
Thank you, dear, also Skip Crocker is here with us tonight.
And Skip, Skip, welcome.
Thank you. Um, so as most of you are aware, what we're proposing is an extension to the existing floating dock system located at Crocker's Boatyard. And the proposal is to extend the system southerly into Manchester Harbor. We reviewed the layout with the harbor master, uh, throughout the whole process, and he's in support of the project. Um, we appeared before the Manchester Conservation Commission and received an order of conditions, uh, dated in September. Um, additional permits that we'll need to get is for this particular project, uh, we filed a MEPA environmental notification form, only did the first phase a couple years ago. Included in that first phase was a configuration of the second phase that was later dropped during the local approval process. So because of that change, we have to go back to MEPA with the notice of project change. So in addition to the note, and we didn't wanna do that until we finished through the planning board process. So in addition to the, uh, MEPA filing, we need a Chapter 91 license for the placement of structures in tidal waters and then of the Commonwealth. And then we also need a Army Corps Section 10 permit for the placement of structures in navigable waters of the United States. So basically, the components of the project, uh, we're proposing 10 finger floats, six on the west of the east, this is a main float coming down. So there are six finger floats off the west side, and then four off the east side. And then we have a terminal float proposed at the end. Then we also have some larger areas of, of docks that'll be used by the, um, dock master and the stored equipment and things of that nature. So the proposed floating docks will be held in place by 16 new 12-inch steel pipe piles. Let's see. So in terms of impacts, the putting marina in a harbor that's recently been dredged is in appropriate use. We've orient- we've skewed the orientation, as you can see, it doesn't go straight out from the existing floating dock because we need to maintain 25-foot setback from the projected, I'm hearing, property lines of adjacent property owners. We, we're set back 20 feet from a proposed future 70-foot wide channel that we created once the Crocker Boatyard and, and Manchester Marine, which is the next hearing, are working together with the harbor master to create this channel. There's no impact on water and sewer infrastructure. The board asked questions about, um, parking spaces and traffic at the site visit, so the project will require six and a half parking spaces. And those will either be provided at the Crocker Lower Boatyard, where the yard is, or they have, um, two lots off of Bridge Street where there's plenty of parking. And then, um, according to the, uh, ITE Transportation Manual, the, the marina will generate 48 trips per day. But what's important is that, that's only 1.4 trips in the AM peak hour, in each AM peak hour, and 4.2 trips in the PM peak hour. So it's a small amount of traffic. The board also asked us to touch on public benefits of the project when we're at the site visit. So we've, we've outlined those in the memo that we sent, uh, last week, but I'll just review them now. So again, the, the project is gonna be utilizing the public investment that the town made in dredging the harbor back in 2017, 2018. It's gonna be improving navigation because once you see the other project, it's gonna create sort of a, a line of the navigation channel, which is gonna help anybody navigating into Manchester Harbor, even people that are using the harbor or visitors coming to the harbor. Investing in, in, in the floating dock system improves the economic viability of this important local business in Manchester. The existing, uh, marina plus the proposed marina will generate $25,000 annually in harbor use and dredging assessment fees. The proposed extension of that is $6,800 a year. Um, the property generates $22,000 in real estate taxes. It has 16 to 22 jobs, 16 right now, but they need 22. Um, the boats that grow at the facility are required to pay excise, state excise tax, taxes, half of that goes to the town. There are secondary, uh, economic impacts from the project to other town businesses. People go get something to eat, they go buy paint, they go, they're doing, they're hoping. And also, it addresses the demand for slip space. As the harbor master mentioned, there's a very long waiting list for moorings spaces, and there's also a very long list for slip spaces. Uh, Crocker Boat had, yeah, has a waitlist of 60. And then lastly, I'd just like to say that it preserves, uh, a business that has a rich, is part of the rich maritime history of the town. So those are the public benefits, um, that we addressed in our original filing, how the project meets all the, um, criteria for men to issue a special permit. And so we hope that you could do that. And so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Go around. Christina?
Um, I guess for my first question, um, you said no impact on water and sewer infrastructure. Um, what would be the increase of demand of water, um, with the addition of, there's washing and maintenance of boats? So has that been looked at?
Your opinion on that?
I mean, we won't be storing any more boats than we typically do now. I would say there's a minimal number of people that wash their boats on a regular basis. Um, obviously, nobody washed in the summer because there's a water ban. I think we use we're using I can't remember the number of, of water use, but I'd say it's a minimal impact on water use.
And this is, I haven't read all the Water Resource Committee's reports, but I both thought I'd read or heard that between you and Manchester Marine, that you guys were one of the top seasonally of water consumers, is that false?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay, I, I'd like, that's why, like, I thought I heard that in one meeting passing. So I guess with the increase of boats, I've just assumed that you would use water to at the end of the season to close them up, store them, and.
We power wash boats, but I mean, that's when we have a washwater tank that we collect water in, that we don't recycle, we pump it, we have it pumped out. Uh, we, that's 3,000 gallons, we empty that three or four times a year.
Okay, so you actually bring the water in or do you use town water?
No, we use town water, but we have to collect the washwater, and we power wash the boats, it's probably the most. We power wash probably 250 boats in the fall. And that water, as much as it, we can, we have to collect. And then we have it pumped and transported off-site for processing. I think, I think for the year, I think it's about 3,000 gallons each time, and I think we empty that four times a year. That's probably, that's like 12,000 gallons, and then we don't fill water tanks anymore because when we use the water in the boats, it all goes stagnant in the tanks, so they might fill it at the yacht club, they might fill it somewhere else. There are the, most of the boats in my marina are small, they don't have big water tanks.
I guess my, just large overarching question for both projects is, um, and maybe this is more to buy on, and anyone else who's on the harbor advisory committee, or anyone on the select board that's here, where are we at on a harbor plan? So I guess that's is that, is there talk, is there discussion? Is that a one-year, two-year, is it done? I just, where are we at on a harbor plan?
So currently, the harbor plan, uh, we have a request for a proposal to the Ur- Urban Harbors Institute. A harbor master plan will take a year to two years to do a proper comprehensive plan. So there's been no money appropriated for one yet, there hasn't been a vote to, uh, actually do a harbor plan yet. It's so, in very beginning stages, and, uh, I would expect it to be sometime before there's a harbor master plan in place.
Greg, you have a comment?
Uh, yes, Ron, I can just elaborate a little bit more, so the, the select board has, uh, discussed, um, creating a harbor master plan, they're in favor of doing that. And they will be working to get that underway, um, and would anticipate, um, getting it underway probably in the wintertime, would welcome, uh, participation from the planning board on, on that committee or task force to undertake, uh, the creation of the master, harbor master plan. And would anticipate, uh, some seed money coming from professional services line that the select board has, and would supplement that, uh, at town meeting in the spring. So we anticipate it getting underway, um, sometime next year.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Foley, any comments?
Um, one question is, have we heard anything from the har- harbor advisory committee? Have they been asked for their input?
The harbor advisory committee, uh, scheduled a meeting for this evening at 5 o'clock, and the topic of a harbor master plan was on the agenda. But due to technical difficulties, that meeting will be moved to next Wednesday.
Do you know if, I mean, have they discussed these, um, expansion plans? Or have an opinion?
Uh, it has been discussed, uh, they have not voted, uh, any on, on the topic. Uh, so I, I don't have any recommendation, one way or the other, from them for anybody.
So I, I mean, for, from my viewpoint, might, might be nice to invite them to the planning board and get their take on, on this plan. I guess at this point, I just have one clarifying, um. On the memo that you sent, you gave the total harbor use fee, did you say these additional moorings would be 6,000 a year?
Yeah, the, some of these numbers have been corrected, so the total combined is 25,000.
Okay.
And then the, yeah, 18,500 is insisting, and then 6,800 is proposed. The proposal would generate 6,800.
6,800, okay.
At the walkthrough, I thought you, were you gonna put something together for us, did I miss that?
Yeah, it was in our packets.
It is, what is it called?
The, um.
It's a memorandum.
I just looked for it too, and I, I'm sorry, I just didn't see it.
Could we get those updated numbers at some point?
Yes.
Additional information is in it?
Yes.
Thanks.
That's all right now, thanks.
Um, the, where the new s- finger slips are going, are they replacing any existing moorings? Or is it just all new, are there just, um, regular moorings in those areas, is there a net, you know, gain, uh?
Skip, I think in your case.
We, we look, we reorganized that cove with Byron's direction. It was plain room in the cove, we just tightened up the mooring field, and everything on that mooring, Byron can stand on this. Everything in that mooring field is bow and stern, and we just put everything in a line, so it's a more efficient use of the space. And currently, where we're proposing putting in docks, there is nothing in the way except for Manchester Marine's got one, what we call Pony Dock. Um, and that's gonna be relocated in their project.
That, that, so it's gonna be 20 new, best.
Right, but I mean, if there was three or four there, it would be 17 new, you know, that's what I was. It's 20.
We haven't, we haven't eliminated any moorings these.
All right, that was my question.
All the moorings that were in the cove are still in the cove, they're just location.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, uh, that's, uh, so.
Um, you mentioned that you had filed with MEPA for the, uh, when you did the Phase 1, that you, um, also Phase 2 was included in your MEPA filing, but you have to modify that?
Yeah. At, at that point, it was just a, a single main float extending out to the harbor, didn't have finger floats on it.
And was that, uh, denied or, or modified on your special permit, in your special permit application?
We, we dropped that design when we went before the local boards. Because he wasn't sure if there was gonna, he just wasn't sure how much money, yeah, was, yeah. So, so because it was included in the MEPA filing, we have to go back and.
Right, okay. I guess my concern is in general, you know, incrementalism is problematic, at least from a permitting, contractual permitting process.
I did, I did confer with MEPA on, on this, and they suggested a notice of project change.
Okay, and MEPA has a public comment process?
Yes, MEPA has a pu- what, uh, yeah, for the notice of project change, I believe it's anyone who commented on the project, or who received copies of the ENF, or who received a copy of the notice of project change.
We dialed it back, I don't remember if it was this board or Conservation Commission. Thought the project was too big for them at the time to understand, so we cut it back to a smaller project at the request of the town of Manchester. I don't know if it's Planning Board or Conservation Commission.
What year was that, do you know? When did you, uh, when?
Maybe three years ago?
I think it was cut back before it came to the planning board.
Okay. And then the other question is the, uh, navigate, um, issues around navigation, maybe a question for Byron. Once you get, uh, some boats out there on the end of that dock, uh, little boat zooming around, and you have a big, you know, 50-foot boat going into Manchester Marine, uh, do we still have the maximum depth available in what's the channel? And do you see that there's, uh, congestion, you know, traffic is our jurisdiction. We don't usually think about boat traffic, but it's a, it's a busy, on a hot summer day, it's a busy place, and it's a, um, it's, my experience is that it's a can be quite narrow and so forth. So Byron, I guess I'd like to know if you think there's any detrimental impact on the, uh, traffic at the, at its peak times?
Sure, so, uh, weekend days, weekend afternoons, uh, when boats coming back in particular. Uh, what we don't see, uh, from boaters in this harbor is everybody leaving at once or getting back at the same time, unless, of course, we're talking about fireworks on the 3rd and 4th of July. Uh, I, I actually feel as though the cove over there right now has more room, uh, for boats to safely stand by and wait to join, um, boats departing or entering the harbor. Boats departing or entering the harbor, uh, than there was, uh, before with the moorings overwhelming that, that particular cove. So, I don't see any detrimental navigational effects. Even on a busy day.
That's all my questions for right now.
Mr. Ollie, any questions?
I sort of feel like a duck out of water, asking bad questions about the harbor. I do support the idea of a master plan for the harbor, I think that's a great idea, I don't think these projects would affect it. Oh, I'm sorry, the master plan would affect these projects necessarily. So I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Chris, Mr. Gilbert, anything?
Have, um, have the selectmen, um, offered an opinion on this?
Mine's a lot of selectmen's meeting, um, they asked a lot of questions, Byron talked a lot of the meeting. They didn't take a vote, they said that they would pass their comments on. I believe that's what they said.
So they don't.
They didn't take a vote.
They don't intend to take a vote?
It's unclear what they intend to do.
I'm not, I'm not clear what the process is, but I, I didn't realize that we had to go to the board.
All right. Just wondering if they offered an opinion.
Greg, you have a response to the SB?
Uh, sure, I just elaborated a little bit, so, so yes, the board, um, did, did have the, uh, the applicants in and did have a discussion. They felt that, uh, they didn't have any particularly, um, important input to provide. They, um, they were focused on, you know, sort of public, public good versus private good. Noted a number of the, uh, benefits of the projects versus the one concern of taking up. Obviously using some ocean bottom land, but, um, did not feel that. Things rose to, to the point of needing a major comment or vote for you as a board.
Okay, thanks, um. I'd be curious to hear if, um, the harbor master has any general comments to offer? Do you have an opinion or opinions? It was, oh, right. Right, um. And are we, I wonder how the board feels, I don't think we need to ask the harbor advisory committee to come in, but. We might feel about maybe asking them to submit an opinion.
We could.
It could be just in writing, send us a memo before we vote.
Could we possibly get copies of the correspondence, various correspondence?
Problem?
From different, you said you got something from the copper master or conservation?
Yes, I can get you a, a copy of the harbor master's opinion.
Any correspondence that you get from other board meetings?
That's all right.
Okay, um, I'll open, uh, this up to the public, uh, right now, um. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions? Uh, Mr. Starkey? You're on mute.
Okay, um.
Could you give us your name, Ben, can you just, uh, state your name and address?
Okay, uh, my name is Jim Starkey, I'm at thirteen Tuxpoint Road. I have been a, I've had a sailboat in the harbor for forty years, I live on the harbor. I'm a past chairman of the harbor advisory committee and a past chairman of the dredging advisory committee. And I wrote the harbor bylaw that was passed by town meeting about ten years ago. I've had a, along a deep involvement in the harbor. The thing that is very different from this, these proposals than almost anything else that you do. Is that the applicants do not own the land on which they propose to build. They don't own the land, the town does not own the land, the state does not own the land. The land is owned by the people. And by the public trust doctrine, which has been part of common law for about twenty-five hundred years. And was codified in the colonial ordinances of sixteen forty-one to sixteen forty-seven. The ocean and the ocean bottom are a public trust, uh, for the, the common of Massachusetts. Chapter ninety-one of Massachusetts general laws cover what is done, uh, codifies the, what the public trust is here. And it also designates the DEP as the agent, agency responsible. Chapter ninety-one, section eighteen, which I hope you are all familiar with in depth. Says outlines the licensure requirements for public title lands, which we are talking here, these are public title lands. That the planning board must be notified prior to a filing for a DDP, uh, nine, chapter ninety-one license. If the planning board may hold a public hearing advising the DEP, I'm not sure this is that meeting or not. But it also outlines the decision-making criteria are absolutely explicit. The project must have a quote proper public purpose and must not be detrimental to the public's rights to these title lands. That is critical, that is what your job is, to determine if there's a proper public purpose to these projects. And whether or not they are detrimental to the public's rights to use titled lands. Okay, what does this have to do with boatyards? It has a lot to do with boatyards. Boatyards have a very important pu- public function. They maintain boats, they repair boats, they store boats, they commission them this spring, they take them apart in the fall, that's very good. No one has any issue with, with boatyards. And boatyards need moorings, they need floats to manage boats that they're working on, that's fine, and if they use those. Those moorings and the, the floats, you know, to store other people's boats during the season, that's fine too, you can object that. But we're not talking about boatyards here, we're talking about arenas. Arenas are a completely different beast, they happen to be owned by the boatyards, but they have completely different economics and, and different legal basis. For example, the DEP establishes very clearly what the public's interest in, in handing, handing out mooring permits. Um, in specific, mooring permits by, by DDP regulations in chapter ninety-one. Moring permits must be assigned fairly from a public and transparent waiting list. Uh, that there may be no discrimination of, uh, by res- by residency for applicants. That there is a cap on what can be charged for a mooring fee. And that no mooring permit can be revoked without proper due process, including the right of appeal to the DEP. A marina, in essence, is a way to jump the waiting list. If you're willing to spend ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year, you don't have to wait on the waiting list. This is not in the public interest. The marinas offer none of these protections to, to their customers. Their customers on a year-by-year basis, they can kick them out if they don't like them, uh, and they have no recourse whatsoever. So there is not, do not conflate a slip in a marina with a legally awarded mooring permit. Boatyards have been accorded moorings, uh, in the past for, for overflow from, from their floats when they're working on boats, when they're waiting for parts. Um, and they, they have rented these out for transients, this is completely appropriate and, and normal. And, but, you know, in the past, uh, about seven or eight years ago, it was discovered that Manchester Marine was in fact renting out their moorings by the season. Um, again, so people can pay five or ten thousand dollars not to have to be on the waiting list and go right to the front. The, the town, both the harbor advisory committee and then formerly by the board of selectmen amended the rules. The harbor, the harbor, uh, mooring rules to say that this is not permissible. That no one can use a mooring, a boatyard mooring for more than two weeks in, in a year. And that's, that's just a clear example of what is best by the public interest. A boatyard has a right to have some moorings, to have floats, and they can rent those, the floats out, but they cannot use this to jump the mooring list. So the question really revolves around whether, not whether the existing moorings will be displaced. Of course, they can't be, because we wouldn't cancel the mooring permit anyway. But whether the projects will prevent the public from getting new mooring permits, and it's absolutely true. We have a harbor that's been maxed out for forty-five years. And if you take a large hunk of the harbor and you turn it over to a private entity to turn it into slips, yes. There are gonna be people who will not be able to get moorings because we have given that public land to a private entity for private slips. So, this is clearly detrimental to the public's right to use these titled lands. There is no question whatsoever that now that we have instituted, um, floating, shared floating piers or, uh, floats for tying boats up. That we could put exactly the same boats on public moorings. That would be otherwise slips in a private marina. So there is no question whatsoever about the number of boats in the harbor, not. It is sophistry to say that you can take a hunk of the harbor bottom, give it to a private entity, and that will not have an effect on the public. That's just plain false. So neither of these projects has a proper public purpose as defined by chapter ninety-one, section eighteen. That is the essence of the question. If you do not find that they have a public purpose, and additional tax revenue is not a proper public purpose, then. And if you find that this is detrimental to the public's right to use tidal land, then you really have to turn this down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Starkey, any other public comments?
Can I ask him a question?
You have a comment?
I have a question for Mr. Starkey.
Yes.
Are you suggesting, um, that this would displace the possibility of, of the number of public moorings increasing?
Uh, let me find my, okay, I guess I'm not muted. Of course there will be more moorings there if we don't do this, of course there will. You're, this is, there's no question at all, if you're going to use additional space for moorings. And I would also point out that the boat, two boatyards want to use not only public tidal lands. But public tidal lands that were dredged at town and state expense, for which they did not contribute a nickel. So, I have to ask about our effects for getting state funding for our next dredging project, which is going to be over three million dollars. When we've taken a third of what they paid to dredge last time, and rather than making it available to the public. We've walled it off and given it to private organizations who've been charged with the market will, so people don't have to sit on a waiting list.
Any, uh, additional comments to Mr. Starkey?
I actually have a question. Mr. Starkey, could you, um, what was the name of the document that you said that you created?
The.
Harbor bylaw. The harbor bylaw?
Harbor bylaw, yes. The harbor bylaw, uh, establishes that the mooring and waiting lists have to be public, they have to be posted town hall. They have to be posted on the website, um, and that the harbor master's a full-time position between April and October. During which the harbor master cannot hold any other town position. We did have a big problem with moorings that for three years, the, nobody got a mooring off of the waiting list, but the number of moorings in harbor didn't go down. This addressed that, and it also opened the possibility for bringing Byron into town. So, the, it was actually rather interesting, the harbor bylaw didn't come up to about, for debate till eleven fifteen at night. Alan, I kind of made a bad call on whether we can go two nights or not, it was highly debated for about, uh, half an hour. And it was passed overwhelmingly by two-thirds on the voice vote, um, at, at quarter to midnight. And so the town is very much behind proper public administration of the harbor.
I'm sorry.
Um, I'm asking myself if there's a difference between these two proposals. I mean, they are two proposals, but we are thinking of them as, um. Uh, collectively. Particularly with, uh, the navigation, um, issues, I just. I can see that the Crocker's float, um, doesn't interfere with navigation to the extent that the Manchester Marine one. And we're not talking about the Manchester Marine one right now, but I just, um, pose in your heads. Whether they have the same public benefit or detriment. The other thing is, I think Jim makes an interesting argument, but I think there's a flip side to that argument, which is if. Someone is on the waiting list and can get a slip, then the waiting list moves up one notch. And, and somebody who's below the person who gets, who's willing to pay for the slip moves to a higher, a, a closer, closer to having a moor. So, um. And I guess then the last question. Is, is there any public access to either of these, well, let's, we're talking about Crockers. The Crocker's, um, pier, proposed pier that were, um. Is there any public access to the pub, to the, to the pier?
We're not proposing any, you mean coming down all the floating docks?
Whatever, any, any public access in?
Not proposed, despite of the phase two, the phase one, uh, DEP required, um, the boatyard to post signs that allow public passage, which is required in the chapter ninety-one. Between, um. What does the sign say?
High and low.
To mean high and low, to walk along with one, that's different. This is not high and low. It's not, so if you, let, yeah, let me just give you an example, if you're proposing a pier of the property. You have to make sure that that pier is high enough, so that if somebody's walking along the shoreline, that there's enough clearance above high water so that they can walk in. Public, public access, huh? Often is required for non, it's always required, the non-water dependent projects proposed on field or floating guidelines. So the regulations require access to and along the waterfront, the non-water dependent projects. These two projects are both water dependent projects. I, I also wanted to point out that DEP, Division of Waterways. Implement section eighteen of chapter ninety-one law. And when they look at chapter ninety-one license applications, they consider public benefit, public de- detriment. Public good and all that in their deliberations, before they issue a license, they have to make those findings.
Chris Ollie?
So, I'm having trouble understanding what are just, we're supposed to be doing here. Uh, it seems to be that Mr. Starkey made a very interesting point, I'm not sure that's our call here, we're not. Is that the DEP that issues the permit, not us?
Yeah.
And we're just advising the DEP as to what the town?
The, the.
You have to give a special permit.
The zoning bylaw that was, I don't know when it was adopted, it's the only one I've ever encountered. The chapter ninety-one regulations, when you, when you prepare a chapter ninety-one license application, you're required to submit a copy to the planning board. Who, as Mr. Starkey said, can either just receive the license application and not comment on it. Or they can comment on it, or they can hold a public hearing, it's at your discretion what you want to do with that. In this case, in this case, your, a, a bylaw was adopted, usually it just goes to the plant, the planning board or whoever represents the town planner. In this case, you adopted a bylaw that said, any project subject to chapter ninety-one license must come to board the planning board and get a special permit.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I have a question. Byron, in, I think our conversation at the site walk, you had mentioned that we're actually, that you're reducing the amount of moorings. Through attrition, which is contrary to what Mr. Starkey just said, that if. These were not a public dock, then we would most obviously have more moorings, so could you touch on that?
I have reduced the number of moorings in the harbor because the harbor is too congested. The majority of the moorings being short scoped, that means the chain is too short, um. For what would be considered, uh, mooring tackle standard. Uh, so in order to, rather than continue to put boats on moorings that have been surrendered or, uh, taken away for. or taken away for failure to use, failure to pay, I would just not reassign those moorings. It is outside the norm for most New England harbors where the idea is that you just keep packing the boats in, but it's inappropriate, the harbor. The number of people that ask, why do we have fenders hanging off all our boats and what's with the laundry baskets? That's because of property damage caused by boats that are overlapped and they're swinging to such an extreme degree. So the moorings have been reduced in the harbor, everywhere in the harbor, every part of the harbor by attrition, and we will continue to do that until we have appropriate spacing for all vessels.
But it's followed by?
As far as, as far as the cove goes, no moorings were taken away for anybody's projects. If I don't do that, I can do it in Kittery, I will, will never do it as long as I'm a harbor master. Nobody's, whether it's a private dock for a property owner or a commercial facility, mooring holders' rights are sacrosanct. We're not going to allow those to be taken away for anybody.
Two other questions. Byon, given that you've just sort of made the case that the harbor is extremely congested, how does that square with adding 40 more boats or what if the total number is X Crockers plus Manchester Marine? That's the first question, and then there was a follow-up question.
Right, so as far as the congestion goes, congestion, as far as moorings go, is something that we can address. We can actually take steps to reduce the number of moored boats that are causing property damage to each other, and eventually be able to allow more appropriate mooring tackle for boats so that when there's a storm or bad weather, boats can have the appropriate amount of chain. That's different than the congestion that we see from boats coming in to our harbor every weekend, Long Beach, or any part of the harbor. And again, if, if all of our boaters were to leave the harbor and come back in the harbor at the same time, that would be incredibly impactful and, you know.
Well, so I think that's important. I think last summer, we were, it was like a sudden squall, and everybody did come back into the harbor at the same time, so.
Yeah, yeah, that, that absolutely, yeah.
That's, that's, that's the eventual event. Okay, the second question is for Skip, and I guess all for you. Do you have public bathroom facilities for your slip, slip owners?
Yes.
Manchester Marine?
Yes.
My, and then is there ever a, does any of the Chapter 91 or special permit conditions ever require the enforcement or reminder of these vessels that they keep their holding tank active, rather than discharging into the?
That's like a state federal.
I know, but the, maybe we could, one condition I think I'd be interested in is having a sign that reminds people that, that's the key, because I think people are.
We're pretty adamant about keeping those things functioning because we don't like working on them.
Right, but, yeah.
So, yeah, signs are easy.
That's fine, signs are easy.
Okay, any, any member of the public would like to speak? Greg?
Thank you, Ron. I just, I guess a clarification question to Byon, if I might. You know, Jim, Tim Starkey's comments were very helpful and informative, but it's my understanding that if the marinas are, are to exist at all, expansion or no expansion, that we would not be putting moorings, additional moorings, where these floats are being proposed. Is that correct, Byon?
Right, so that, that area of the harbor was already terribly congested. First step taken was to convert those moorings to bow and stern, and then final step was to appropriately align them, which would be wonderful to do throughout the entire harbor, but to align them so that the boats don't take up more room than they need to in the harbor. We, we don't need the boats on moorings to take up more space than they need. I have no intention of assigning any more moorings, new additional moorings in, in the harbor until all of the swing issues are addressed, scope issues addressed. If we can get those done, then I would absolutely 100% advocate, if spacing was appropriate, to reintroducing those moorings that have gone away due to attrition. So there's no reason that, to think that eventually through a harbor master plan, through thoughtful process, that we could not one day increase those numbers, but there are steps that have to be taken first. I don't, I don't know if that hit the mark or not.
Well, again, I was really focusing on this, the areas right in front of both marinas.
Right, right, so, right, so those are already heavily trafficked areas, and lots of boats coming in and out, particularly in the spring and fall to those two facilities, as boats are being launched and hauled. And it was challenging to get boats in and out of those facilities. And I would say, if we look at that area now, that issue's been corrected. We've created ample, appropriate navigational space for vessels to get in and out of those facilities for the service and work that needs to be done. And also, obviously, the boats going in and out of the slips.
On the sidewalk, we talked about baffle walls or something? Was that?
I'm sorry?
Did we talk about some kind of baffles being put in on that side during the sidewalk? Or was, or I was, was I mistaken?
Baffles, no, no. The bound stern moorings that we, we put in, converted those moorings to, and then the realignment, that was the, that was the necessary thing to do. That now, that part of the harbor right now is probably one of the easier ones to get in and out of as far as moorings go.
I have one more question.
Yeah, Mary, follow me.
You brushed over the parking. Could we get a clear understanding of the, because it's, you know, you'd need additional parking for, what, 20 to 25 cars, 20 cars?
Six and a half parking spaces.
For 20 slips?
Yep. There is, there are national standards, and there's a standard of so many parking spaces per slip, and the, that equation results in six and a half parking spaces for 20 slips.
When you take the boats out and put them in the water, you have the storage where the boats were for parking?
Yeah, and I'm just going back to the new, in Trump Town Planner's notes, that I, I just don't want it brushed over, knowing that we have a parking issue downtown, that, you know, for those times where there's still boats in storage and, you know, people need parking. Is it onsite? You mentioned something on Bridge Street, some other sites on Bridge Street. I guess, just trying to understand if there's clearly parking when needed.
So if the boats are still in stores, people aren't parking to use the slips because boats are still on the, so as the boats get launched, it opens up more and more parking. Currently, in my lower yard, we have capacity to store, I'm going to say 20 boats, and they're all roughly, I think the smallest one down is probably 32 feet, so, which is standard car. Our 20 sailboats, powerboats down there, they're 30 feet long. Plenty of room for parking, I think you can get 25 cars down there on a Saturday. And then the upper yard's almost an acre, and we get about 50, 60 boats in there, ranging in size from 26 to 40, 42, 24. So, you know, we're talking, if I rented all my slips, that would be 66 slips that can park 100 boats 26 feet or greater on the property. You should easily be able to park 66 cars. Keeping in mind, during the winter, those, all the boats are hauled out, we still have anywhere from 15 to 20 employees parking there every day. Every drives his own car. I'll call it 15, just five of them are in S6. And there's parking, there's a small parking lot behind my father's house, at Seven Ashen Avenue, which I haven't, he's been over, and I think there's parking for 10 cars there. Maybe eight, including his. So what happens in April is we empty the lower yard, so we have parking down there on weekends. So by May 1, the lower yard is typically empty, maybe one or two stragglers. So there's parking during the week down there and during the weekends, and then the parking behind my father's house is reserved, parking there during the week, and on the weekends, that's open, and as the boats get launched, there's more parking, more people using. We take all the trailers, trailer boats all go to S6, so there's no trailer stored there. We clean the yard, we put the equipment away inside, maximize the parking as much as we possibly can.
Thank you.
So I know there was some talk about getting an opinion from the harbor committee. I was wondering if you wanted to continue or if we could move towards a vote tonight? Just trying to get a sense of the board.
Can I ask?
No.
Betsy Ware, you suggested that we might want to continue the hearing. Can you explain why?
As the person who writes the decision, I usually don't like the board to write, to vote on it the night of the hearing. I don't believe the world is in that much of a rush. My preference, and this has consistently been my preference for 30 years of land planning, is that the board waits to the next meeting or the following meeting where they have a detailed decision in front of them. And the applicant has a detailed decision in front of them, and you hash out the decision. It's much cleaner. It's a legal document that gets filed at the Registry of Deeds, and given some of the idiosyncrasies and, you know, kind of shape-shifting of various elements of the project, whether it's this project or any project, it, it just, there's no need to, to take a vote on the night of the hearing.
So I just support what you're saying. Is there any other information we want? Does the board feel they want to get an opinion from the harbor advisory?
We, we kind of asked for a opinion from the harbor committee.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think this approach is very refreshing, thank you. But I think, my understanding, there's only three people on the harbor advisory committee? Is that true?
I don't know. Do we know how many on the harbor?
Three, there's, there's actually seven members.
I just, just as we are a board, people have differing opinions, so I would like to hear all the concerns, not just one letter, so I thought there was three, so I might add on that, but maybe they could come versus a letter.
Well, are, is the, are they predisposed to offer an opinion on this?
I do not know. Certainly, I'll be addressing this with them, bringing up the issue next Wednesday at their rescheduled meeting.
Do you know, Ron?
I, I can't offer an opinion for them, I, I don't know.
All right, in lieu of what I've heard, I think we might want to just continue, get an opinion from the harbor committee, maybe a detailed opinion of any concerns so it satisfies the board. I think.
I guess maybe pros and cons, I guess maybe you're, you're like, oh.
Concerns that are expressed by your committee, if they chose to give us, that, that would be great. Byon, any other comments from the board? Otherwise, I would ask the applicant to, ask for a continuance to November 28th, send a letter to town clerk by postal mail, and a copy by email to the planning board clerk, Gail Hunter, requesting that the public hearing be continued through November 28th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, is that okay with you?
That's our next meeting.
So you need to vote on that?
Yes.
I'll take a vote on the, on the request for continuance.
Of the Crocker's Boatyard?
Of Crocker's Boatyard.
So moved.
Roll call, Christina?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we open the, the Manchester Marine.
Okay, this is the same, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on the special department application for site plan approval from Manchester Marine. Public hearing notice has duly been, been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket as follows, in accordance with advanced general laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Manchester by the Sea Planning Board, the public hearing on November 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This is a hybrid meeting with public participation, we assume, to consider the application of Manchester Marine to install and reconfigure floating docks and create a linear configuration zone at the facility located in Manchester Harbor, enclosed with Section 7.5 and 4.1.10J of the zoning bylaws. It's similar to Crocker's Boatyard proposal, they're proposing to add slip areas to existing docks to the south of its, of their facility. Under Section 7.8 of the zoning bylaw, the application and plan was sent with requests for comments to the Conservation Commission, DBW, Water Health, Police Chief, Fire Chief, and selectmen. The boards and departments have 35 days to respond. At this time, we had a response from the Police Chief, Concom, and the harbor master. The board held a site walk on October 27th. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Susan St. Pierre for the applicants.
Okay, and we also have Nicolades here from Manchester Marine.
I'm sorry.
Nicolades. Manchester Marine General Manager, and Eric Stevenson, representing the owner. Okay, so the Manchester Marine, for, I think everyone knows, is right adjacent to the Crocker Boatyard in Manchester Harbor. So here's the Crocker Boatyard here, existing conditions, and here's Manchester Marine In this case, we don't have a meet for filing because it's under the threshold for requiring an environment notification form, but we did have to go before the Manchester Conservation Commission, and we did receive an order of conditions. We also require a Chapter 91 license to place structures in tidal waters, and we will be required to have an army corps for placing structures in navigable waters of the United States. So what we're proposing here is currently, this, this is the main float, as you might recall from the site visit for those of you who were there. Currently, they have linear birthing along that main float. So that linear birthing is going to be replaced with six finger piers, three of them are 50 feet long, and three of them are 30 feet long. So these existing vessels that are birthed here will be accommodated in those finger piers. Then the other part of this project is to reconfigure the easterly docks, and I believe you had this plan in your set. So you can see how existing float, floating docks are kind of, they're at all different angles, and it's not very efficient. So we took this opportunity to do a more efficient layout, and that, that process is going to create three, four additional seasonal slips in this area. The provision of these finger floats is going to create, let me see here, three new seasonal and three, three new operational slips. So they, some of these boats are used for their, some of the linear birthing is used for the operations. So the total So the total between the easterly slip and the finger piers is seven new seasonal slips and three new operational slips. So when you add Crocker's and this project, we have twenty-seven new seasonal slips, both projects combined.
Finger pier comes out from the middle of the building, goes, the, the, the one closest to town, goes.
This one?
No, come back. Is that one, yeah, where's, that's right in the middle of, so is that the gas dock?
Oh, the dock is, the gas dock's here, right, a little, a little beyond it, coming to its town. Now that wouldn't interfere with the use of the gas dock or the pump out. So, uh, these finger piers will be held in place by, uh, six twelve-inch diameter steel pipe piles, similar to the Crocker's Boatyard. And the reconfiguration will include eighteen new, uh, twelve-inch diameter steel. Similar, I mean, the impacts are similar to what I described for the Crocker Boatyard, it's an appropriate use for the harbor. Their setback, the setback from the, this proposed seventy-foot channel, which is shown in the hash lines on your plans, varies in this, in this layout from, uh, over seventy feet in this location to ten feet in this location. This, uh, results in a parking demand of three point three parking spaces. And Manchester Marine has two lots off of Ashland Gap that has adequate parking facility to accommodate three, four parking spaces. The average daily traffic is twenty-four trips. That includes only point seven trips during the A M peak hours and two point one during the P M peak hours. Again, we're, the facility is taking advantage of the harbor dredging, which is a public infrastructure that the town invested in. Uh, I'd also like to say that contrary to what was said earlier in the meeting, Manchester Marine did invest its own money in dredging along its facility out here when the town did its dredge. So they piggybacked on that and paid for it with their own money. Also, again, it's going to ensure the viability of an important local business in the community. The existing facility and the proposed expansion would generate seventeen thousand dollars in harbor use fees. The proposed expansion itself is thirty-five hundred and seventy dollars per year. This property is larger than the Crocker's and they pay fifty thousand dollars in real estate taxes. They have three local jobs. And again, the excise tax has a part of the town, and this facility also has secondary economic benefit to other businesses in town. Manchester Marine has a seventy people on its waitlist and also is part of the rich maritime history of Manchester. So, again, we're seeking your approval for the special permit.
Okay, um, any comments from the board, similarly?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say it's similar to what we just went through with Crocker's. And I guess the more I hear, I just want to voice this, that it's, it's, it's hard for seven planning board members to decide something like this without a harbor plan, without really a, um, a town plan, um, so maybe I'm just struggling with that, but it's hard to, you know, since it is public waters, it's hard to, it's hard to kind of figure out what the, the master harbor plan is for the town, but.
Yeah, I do, I do also want to mention that, you know, up and down the coast of Massachusetts, there, marinas everywhere. And they all have to be licensed through the state, if they weren't appropriate, they wouldn't be licensed. Yes?
Oh, I was going to make a couple of points, um, your town character is one of the master plan issues. And I think this cuts both ways on town character, town character, when you come into Manchester from, you know, some other place, it's a very quaint little harbor and, you know, and, uh, just, it's double counting, by the way, for say then the excise tax and, uh, restaurant revenue probably because the people who have paying excise tax presumably live nearby, but anyway. Um, so I think that the to- town character is less marina and more harbor. But that said, to service the boats in the harbor, we need, uh, robust, healthy boatyards who will be here and not, you know, sell to a senior housing or whatever. You know, is it, I, I said that tongue in cheek, tongue in mask. So, so this is, this represents a, an commitment of these two boatyards to the use that serves this quaint harbor, um, this hurricane hole harbor, sort of. So I think that those are two things that, that I struggle with. The question I have is, you, you have a, um, pump out on Manchester Marine's dock, is that yours or is that a, does there a public, I know anybody can use it, but is that paid for with public money or is that a, just yours that hasn't worked?
So we could apply for reimbursement from the state, but we haven't in a number of years. Uh, we just do, we've just been running it out of our own expense. And those pump outs are still free to the general public and to any of our customers, including the town.
Okay.
It's just that it's the process to apply for reimbursement requires you to log all these hours and everything, it's just, it's been too cumbersome to be, work their way.
So two questions, is that the only pump out in the, in town, Bia?
That's the only shore side, um, the other pump out is, is the boat.
Okay.
And we do pump out at Manchester Marine.
Okay, um, and I guess the question is, could we, um, can make it, maybe it's a question for Betsy, for either of these proposals, could we make, um, hosting a, a pump out, uh, in perpetuity, a condition of our approval? Because that is a public benefit.
Did you say posting?
Uh, conditioning a pop, pump out facility on these piers, either continuing at Manchester Marine in perpetuity or, you know, for twenty years or whatever it is. And maybe the addition of one at Crocker's, I'm just, it's a question because I'm, I am struggling a little bit with the public benefit. And I do think that the pump out that Manchester Marine has is a public benefit. So I would want to see that continued, it's going to get squeezed a little bit here with this dock, I think, but, um, so.
Well, even the harbor master uses the, the pump out at Manchester Marine to pump out the pump out boat. So it has a public benefit. It's the way of that boat either, you know, I mean, whatever they're doing is going to.
Right, I guess my point is, there is a public benefit along this pier that is important to acknowledge.
Do you have, do you want to think?
Skip, skip, we need to speak for Crocker to install the infrastructure to it, yeah, but it's.
That's a bigger thing. I mean, it may be that, that we don't need two right next to each other, I'm just thinking out loud.
Just to give an, I think Marblehead has two and they have three thousand boats.
Yeah.
We have six hundred boats in the harbor.
So they have none, they have a pump out boat.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But I do think that the existing pump out at Manchester Marine is a public benefit that's worth acknowledging.
I think we said that in our original filing, yes, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, how do you look like, Ed?
I think it's worth mentioning that, uh, I applaud both of your businesses, it's really great that you, you're thriving, I hope you're thriving and that you're here. And I have a question for Greg, if we didn't have this bylaw which compels the planning board to review this, which I really feel is not part of our bailiwick, um, who would be reviewing this?
Conservation position.
So, two different, two different processes, so it's, it's before you now as a special, as a site plan review process, special term.
The harbor master receives copies of chapter ninety-one licenses.
Right, so the separate, the chapter ninety-one process is separate and that allows people to comment, so different boards would have that opportunity once they file for the chapter ninety-one, chapter ninety, you know, D P will announce the applications been received and they've opened up the comment period. And any, any board in town can provide comment regarding, again, the public, public benefit for using ocean bottom land. So this is, this is unique to Manchester, as I think, um, um, Miss St Pierre mentioned at the beginning. Uh, most, most towns do not have a, a separate permitting process for chapter ninety-one projects.
Well, for whatever it's worth, I think this should be on our list of bylaws that we might want to revise slash eliminate. Um, I really think this is out of our territory and I would really, I really feel it should be something the selectmen weighs in on, uh, because they manage the town. This is a, a management and economic issue, just a lot of issues, but they're not really the kinds of issues that is our, um, expertise, that's just my opinion.
Right, so that's a separate process and, and the select board may very well comment to D E P through the chapter ninety-one process. Different set of criteria than what you have here before you tonight.
Okay, Christina?
So, um, I was on the board a few years ago when you came and, um, I, I think the scope of that project was a little bit smaller. So I don't think the same questions came up, and I heard phase one, phase two, how many phases are there? Are we at the end or are we still going?
That's my project.
Okay.
Manchester Marine, you're talking, this is Manchester Marine's area.
Sorry, sorry, is it, can I ask that question if it's a different hearing?
I think we're on Manchester Marine, what are you trying to ask?
I think that's a good question.
She's asking, well, this, is this?
Is this the beginning of a bigger?
Everything they're going to be doing, yeah, for now and forever.
Yes.
We don't have any additional plans.
Also, the, the creation of this seventy-foot channel is going to kind of dictate what, it's setting a boundary.
Right.
It's not really, I mean, it's, as I mentioned at the site visit, there's no really designated channel, but now maybe the town could adopt it somehow or another, I don't know. Sure, how that would work, but.
Could someone speak to, I guess, are we transferring, what, what are we deciding to do that you can use this public land in perpetuity for a hundred years? Like, what does this decision look like? Betsy, can you, that or?
Unfortunately.
What is it?
So.
What are we deciding?
Well, we're deciding based on the.
Okay, I didn't ask you, I was asking Betsy or Christina.
We're giving a special permit.
I understand that.
So we're deciding on that criteria specifically.
That's not my question, Wes.
So from my perspective, I can think of a half a dozen communities that, um, require the planning board to grant special permits for water-related uses. So this is not unique to Manchester. Whether you agree with it or not, or whether, you know, um, is, 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 um, it's, right now, it's in your bylaws, it's in a number of other communities' bylaws. Your role is to take an overview based on what you know of the harbor and what everybody else who's commenting knows of the harbor. And whether you think it's germane in appropriate use for this expansion, whether there's sufficient public benefit knowing it at a local level. And you also need to understand that there's a number of hoops that, you know, um, Miss St Pierre has pointed out about, um, the other permits that are needed. So I think you have to, you as a board have to look at public benefit. You have to take the advice of the harbor committee and the harbor master in terms of whether they think it's appropriate. And whether it's, uh, I, your master plan has talked about economic stimulus and increased commercial operations, both of these boatyards have been in operation here for a long time. So, um, those are all the things that you need to weigh.
So I guess specifically, is there a timeframe, are we allowing them to use this public area in perpetuity forever or a hundred years or? That's my specific question, is there a timeframe that we could condition this permit? Is that nor, I, I don't know.
I don't think it's normal to condition it for, um, a limited period. I know there are some special permits that, um, communities put a limit on in terms of timeframe. I think they're making a financial commitment here, so I think to some degree it's pretty unfair to say, oh, you can only do this two years or five years or whatever.
Absolutely, but it's like a lifespan of the dock, so that's.
Right.
Can I say the chapter nine, so the chapter ninety-one license, uh, will impose a thirty-year term.
Okay, that's, there you go.
Which can be renewed, but the initial license will be a thirty-year term. It used to be, they used to be licensed forever, but they've changed that.
Thank you.
That's exactly.
Do you have a comment, Nicole?
Yeah, just, just for consideration, I'm not going to speak to any of that more technical stuff that's above my pay grade, but, you know, if you look at where the slips are, because of our current use, you know, you wouldn't be able to put moorings or anything there.
No, absolutely.
So it's, it would be a decision between, you know, not allowing us to do it would be a decision that you just don't want anything. You know, it's, there's not an, another option.
It's not a trade-off for moor, moorings of.
So what is the lifespan of a dock?
Um, in terms of where we would have to rebuild?
Correct.
We were getting thirty out of dock before we went to pressure treated, the hardware wears up before the lumber, so.
But it's really the piers are the big, you know, piles, yeah.
Piles.
So if there was some issue, we needed to correct it.
But their, their chapter ninety-one license requires, demands they maintain that pier.
Yes.
So they're going to put something in and they're going to maintain it for as long as they can, can get a decent lifespan out of it. And as long as, um, the pier is, you know, doesn't get, if the pier gets damaged, they have to fix it.
Especially the harbor master, if he sees a, something, a dangerous situation, he can.
I'm just saying, if, if, if people in twenty-five years decide that this wasn't a good decision, they can correct it with a thirty-year period. I'm just, but my time period was wondering, what are our rights as a community to take back if we ever did need to, that was really my question. Have you ever seen that?
Well, wouldn't it be, it's a thirty-year term to be renewed by the D E P, not back to the town?
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember, but I assume that there's probably public notice as part of that renewal, so people could comment again, but I, I'd have to check, but I'm pretty sure that is.
If our rules are the same, I would think that they would have to come back again.
So?
I'm looking at our future site plan review pieces and our current, I have two other issues that if, I think if Laura were here, she would say, given that you're adding additional cars, could you add, um, bike racks? This is something to think about. And the other thing that I'm not finding in our new ones, but I says, oh yes, outdoor lighting standards. So in our current bylaw, we have, um, lighting somewhere, regulation, um, limited noise, light and odor. In our proposed, we have, um, the shielding of light fixtures, light trespass, light, light intensity, color efficiency. One question I would have for, it's not really germane to the special permit at hand, and I understand that. But Manchester Marine has a, um, high-intensity floodlight that you can see from all over, at night, from all over the downtown. And it's not a best practice to have a, um, unshielded light in today's world, you, I mean, most building codes now would require you have a dark skylight. So I just suggest that perhaps you consider, um, upgrading that light to a cutoff light that is, um, not, doesn't have so much light trespass out, um, from your property.
Okay, we'll look into that and go back on.
Notice, everybody, drive, drive, when you drive out of here, go notice, and it's, it is a beacon. No, I'm not saying you shouldn't light your docks or.
Yes, there were significant security issues, but yes, we'll look into that.
The trespass, light trespass is the issue, it's, it's not on your docks, if it's on your building, it's probably not, um, but, yeah, that, um, Laura, Becky, Betsy has a question or a comment?
Oh.
I have a question, so you've added these slips that are coming out toward the channel.
Yes.
What is where the gas dock and the pump out are, what is the space, the dock space you have? The length of it for, um, for both those elements? So you've got a gas dock there and you've got a pump out.
It's probably sixty feet, I don't have scale on, is that sound right?
We have sixty feet set aside, um, you know, kind of designated as a fuel dock, but there's probably more like eighty to a hundred feet there that's usable. But we can only service one boat at a time, so we really only need the one space.
Okay.
Okay, did I ask for any public input? Any public input? Okay, so I think, uh, what we'll do is the same thing. We'll look for a Harvard Advisory Committee opinion. Continue to the twenty-eighth if that, uh, if we'll vote that, um, do the same thing, send a letter and an email. I'll ask the board for a motion to continue the public hearing until November twenty-eighth.
So.
Your second?
I'm sorry.
Uh, roll call, Gary?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Could I answer a question? I'm sorry.
Six to, uh.
Um, the Harbor Advisory Committee, uh, we're gonna try to get that for the twenty.
Uh, I think Bayern said their meeting next week.
Okay.
I think, and I think maybe if, maybe you may even wanna go to that or listen in, I don't know.
We don't wanna get out of the country, but maybe.
They hope you're there.
You remember?
I am.
Oh.
So biased?
You'll have to recuse yourself.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Do you think this is the Harbor Advisory Committee meeting?
We're only gonna point it Monday night.
Next week, once a day, I'll come back on to do the minutes.
One thing I'm finding out is communication is. You gotta help her call me.
Yeah, so that's okay. All we're doing is minutes, right?
He had minutes. And, uh, and then we just wanted to talk about if we need to meet on, uh.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll be, I'll keep.
So, uh, Sarah's gonna, we're gonna, uh, so Sarah's gonna recuse herself from this. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on the special permit application for a site plan approval for the Manchester Department of Parks and Recreation. Public hearing notice has been duly, has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket in, as follows, in accordance with the Manchester law for the chapter forty-eight, section eleven, the Manchester by the Sea and Land Board will hold a public hearing on November ninth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. This is a hybrid meeting with public participation. We assume we consider the application of Manchester Parks and Recreation to construct an athletic field parking lot on Pine Street in accordance with sections six point nine and ten point three, point five, point two D of the zoning bylaw. The proposal from Manchester by the Sea Parks and Rec is to construct a youth athletic field with twenty-five parking spaces on the site of the old burn dump at one fifty-six to one sixty Pine Street. The site has been remediated in accordance with mass DEP standards. The facility required much-needed relief from Mascanoma Park, Sweeney Park, as well as school sports facilities, all which receive a significant amount of use. Under section seven point eight of the zoning bylaw, the application of plan was sent with a request for comments from the CONCOM, DPW, Board of Health, Fire Chief Ed Selectman. The boards had thirty-five days to respond. At this time, we received response from the Police Chief's office. No other responses have been received. The board held a site walk on October twenty-seventh. And for the applicant, um, who is presenting, Nate?
Hey Ron, how you guys doing?
Nate?
And we have Sher, and we have Cheryl Marshall, uh, on as well.
Cheryl, welcome.
We can probably skip right to you Nate.
If you can give me control, I can, uh, uh, put up some presentation materials.
Uh, that would be up to, um, let's see, I don't have, um, host.
Oh, yeah.
You host?
I can, I can do that. Hold on just a minute.
Uh, thank you Greg.
So while we wait a minute for Greg, um, I was just gonna start out with for anybody who's not aware of the whole Pine Street project. The way the athletic field project came up is, um, you know, the overall town master plan that this board did, the planning board lost hard work between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen. And then that led to, um, the, um, the shortage of athletic fields was one of the things that showed up. So then the Parks and Rec Committee did the, uh, Parks and Rec Athletic Field Master Plan. And after looking everywhere, um, basically the only space in town, um, was this Pine Street area, um, that we know used to be the old burn dump. And in many towns and many places, this is a, a great use for that area that has lain dormant for a long time. So now I'll turn it over to Nate.
So, uh, we have enlisted Weston Sampson as the consulting engineer to develop the, uh, plans and specifications for this project. Uh, we've gone through a number of public meetings, uh, for the project, solicited feedback from the community, from a lot of the direct butters. We've gone through CONCOM, um, you know, as it is the existing burn dump, you know, there was definitely some concerns in that regard. Uh, the site has an AUL, which is an activity and use limitation, which basically stipulates, uh, what can and cannot be done on the site, and that's issued by DEP. Athletic fields is, uh, one of the approved uses for the site. CONCOM, uh, we have direct, uh, wetlands that are on the site. Uh, so that is kind of one of the main things that limited the size of the field of what we were, uh, working, I, I shouldn't say against, but you know, that's basically, you know, we went as far as we could. We made the field as big as possible without going into the thirty-foot no build zone or no disturb zone. So as you can see on the screen, this is kind of a, a general, uh, layout of the field and the parking lot. Mostly gonna be used for U-ten, I believe. Is that, is that what we're saying Cheryl? So mostly smaller kids as a practice, uh, to take really away the burden from some of the other fields like Masco, um, that are getting heavily used. And also in preparation for the next Sweeney, uh, field upgrade that we are currently under design for as well. Cause once that goes into construction, we're gonna lose that for likely a couple, uh, seasons. You know, playing seasons. So we're gonna need to supplement with fields elsewhere. Here's a profile of the overall field. Um, so showing kind of the, the drainage, uh, you know, we have a general two percent slope on the field going to either side. On either side, uh, we have the wetland buffers. And from, basically from the wetland buffer up to the fields, a three-to-one slope, which was allowed us to maximize the field. Uh, on the slopes, we're gonna be planting with a pollinator mix, um, you know, as approved by CONCOM. Here are some kind of screenshots or some photos of the existing site as it is now. Mostly just vegetation that DPW mows, uh, I believe once a year, uh, to, to make sure there's nothing growing into the existing liner. Uh, this is the current plant set, um, as we went through at the site walk. I'll go to the parking lot and materials plant here. This is a good one. So as I said, we have twenty-five parking spots, um, which is, uh, including an ADA accessible spot, which will allow anyone to get up onto the field that is located right here. One comment that, uh, Ms. Tenny made during the site walk was to revise the, uh, walkway up to the field. We initially had it kind of hugging the parking lot and it exceeded the five percent grade that would require a handrail. Um, it was still under the ten percent, you know, for ADA, but it did require a handrail. We modified it to do more of a serpentine, uh, route up, which kept it below the five percent, which does not require a handrail. Uh, we added some plantings, some, uh, small, uh, shrubs in this area to also kind of help fill it in and make sure, you know, kids aren't cutting through, uh, this area right here or, or anyone cutting through there, kind of trampling it over time. Uh, we also have one tree located right here. I believe that's a red maple. This is the current, uh, plant list right here. So it's a mix of red maples. We have some green giant arborvitae along the back, uh, some white pine and some pin oak. And then the shrubs are the, are common witch hazel. And the arrowwood, or burnum, um, and so you can see these, uh, the green giant arborvitae and the, uh, white pines are all along the back here to provide screening for one of the direct butters. Uh, Cheryl and I met with him on two occasions and, you know, this was really to help alleviate the, the sightlines from his residence right down onto the field and help to provide some, uh, screening for him, you know, as these, uh, uh, plantings grow. And we also, you know, looking at these to meet the, uh, one tree for five parking spot requirement that is in the bylaw. So the other aspect is that, uh, so this is gonna be a paved parking lot. All the drainage is going to go to two catch basins that are located on, uh, the uh, entrance to the, uh, parking lots on each side. Those will tie into an existing catch basin, um, that we are gonna renew and slightly shift to accommodate this walkway. And that ties into the existing, uh, stormwater system that is in Pine Street. A little better shown right here. So any runoff that's coming from the parking lot is not going into, so this is all granite curb surrounding the parking lot. That's all gonna be captured and go down to these two catch basins and then out. I think the other kind of major thing that we've been talking about, you know, we certainly heard throughout the, the public meetings, uh, was pedestrian access. And, you know, how do we make sure the, uh, site is accessible for our kids to walk to and, you know, be confident that, you know, we, they can have access. Um, so we had discussed and, uh, part of our plan, um, was to, to make this sidewalk. Am I sharing the wrong screen here? There we go. Uh, we are gonna, uh, this current sidewalk ends just at Moses, uh, Moses Hill. So our plan is to extend the sidewalk, uh, asphalt sidewalk with granite curbs down to the opposite end of Moses Hill and then do a crosswalk, uh, basically which ties into where the uh, new serpentine path will lead up. I had our, uh, and our DPW's on-call traffic engineer review this plan. We looked at site distances, uh, for approaching from both sides of the road and then site distances, uh, sightline distances, uh, from exiting the parking lot. Their review, uh, noted that if we assume, uh, and I should know it's a twenty-five, it's posted twenty-five miles an hour. And, you know, one of the main comments from residents was that, you know, that is not the speed cars generally travel. So we assumed that, uh, when we reviewed the sightlines, when our engineer reviewed the sightline, she assumed that it was a, uh, eighty-fifth percentile, thirty, for thirty-five miles an hour, which would require stopping distance of two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, if you assumed it went up to forty miles an hour, that increases to three hundred and five feet. So when she looked at it, um, she noted that there were, there are no, um, sightline issues coming outbound. But she did note that there's one minor sightline issue on the inbound side, um, before you get to, uh, the existing entrance, uh, due to kind of some foliage and shrubs that have grown into the kind of sightline right through here. So one item she said that could address that is the addition of the, uh, activated pedestrian signs. So as we were already planning to include those, you know, we'd have basically met that requirement. Uh, one deviation she did recommend, um, you know, from this plan that as I have laid out on the screen is just moving the uh, pedestrian crossing sign ahead, back a bit further into the two hundred and fifty to three hundred foot range. So I have them, you know, a bit closer than that, you know, so this outbound one would more likely move, uh, you know, to the very entrance of, uh, slightly before the Moses Hill. And then on the opposite side, it would go further out towards one twenty-eight. Another op, item that she said we could include is, uh, yield arrows or, or shark teeth, as they're sometimes called. And that, uh, you know, provides another visual, uh, you know, warning that there is crossing coming up. You know, from any, any way you're coming, um, inward, inbound or outbound, you'll very clearly see the activated flashing signs, um, you know, from any distance from the inbound side. You can see them basically from Rockwood Heights, you know, which is, or the, uh, the state DPW yard. And on the, uh, outbound side, you can see it, uh, well before you get to, uh, Moses Hill. I think that, uh, pretty much covers, you know, everything that we've talked about on the sidewalks and, you know, major concerns that, you know, we heard from residents and, uh, throughout the course of the project. So can open up to, uh, questions and comments.
Yeah, Nate, it's Ron. Um, the sidewalk, is that bitconc sidewalk you're proposing on the, uh?
Correct, yes. Asphalt sidewalk with granite, vertical granite curb.
Will there be a curb? Okay, so there'll be a curb. So, um, there's some protection.
Yes.
Okay, and what about, uh, removing some of that brush, uh, on that sight distance, uh? You know, in, in addition to the signage?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry. We can certainly trim, the DPW can certainly trim that, trim that back as, you know, just that, as a housekeeping item.
Okay. All right. Um, any questions from the board? Chris Olmey?
Uh, Nate, is there lighting? Any kind of lighting in this parking area?
Uh, there's gonna be no part, uh, lighting proposed for the field at all. Basically due to the, uh, kind of myriad of issues, the, you know, all the butters, um, were certainly not in favor of lighting. And then, uh, with the, uh, being the old burn dump, we could only go down twelve inches. So there's no way to do a foundation, you know, the foundation necessary for any type of field lighting.
And how did you determine the number of parking spaces?
Uh, basically we maximized what we could get on the site. It was kind of a compromise between, uh, you know, filling out the field size, kind of building in, as I noted before, the, kind of working from the buffer zones, uh, with three-to-one slopes up to field level, uh, and then kind of making that rectangle and then working, you know, as it's not a perfectly square site, you know, kind of working with a bunch of different configurations to try to figure out, you know, how many, how we can maximize parking.
There's overflow parking too across the street, I think you said.
Is there overflow parking?
No, or there's gonna be no overflow parking. I think we are thinking that if the, there is a need, uh, we would look to the shoulder of Pine Street where there is quite a bit of shoulder, uh, to accommodate that.
What about where we parked for the site visit? What, what was that?
That's just, that's just going to Moses Hill.
Yeah, that's Moses Hill. Uh, the residents, I think, would be very wary of that. Uh, they did express concern about that during the public meetings. So I, I, I don't think, uh, kind of akin to, uh, forestry and the pickleball court, I think we want to stay away, uh, from, from parking there.
Mary?
So I guess along the parking question, um, is there a industry standard for fields? Based on the size of the field? So you know there's gonna be X amount of kids playing? You know, I understand the space is confined, so that's how you did parking, but are we trying to fit a square peg into a round hole and, and are we accommodating enough parking?
It is a, a little bit also based on industry standard of that size field. So it's assuming like two teams of twelve, um, and twenty-five spots, which we know that's never exactly right. But, um, yes, at one point when the architects, the engineers were working on it, they did mention a smaller parking lot. And at that point, I said, then, you know, forget the whole project. If we don't have at least twenty-five spots, then we don't have a field as far as I was concerned. And, um, that's when the field had to shrink a little to make sure we did have at least twenty-five spots.
Okay, I know you mentioned the runoff from the parking lot. Where is the runoff going in the back that goes towards neighbors and then? So, there's one side that has a neighbor there, I think, and then in the back, and then there's the wetlands on my head.
Wetlands field.
But, yeah, so is there any? Is there any plan for runoff or is it just, because it's so wet back there?
No, it should all infiltrate, you know, as it does now. It's, it's gonna be a grass field, you know, so we are, we are specifying a bit of a sandier soil mix that should help stimulate growth for the field, but also help with that drainage to make sure it does infiltrate and we're not pooling up there. I think, you know, one of the previous slides, it, you know, we do have a slight slope on the field to, to help promote that, you know, so you're not getting standing water, but everything should infiltrate, you know, as it does now, and especially on, you know, the, the two-to-one slopes where this is gonna be, you know, pollinator mix, long, tall flowers, wild flowers, you know, so that's really gonna help absorb everything and then you're into the wetlands here already, basically to the corners of the project here.
And then just another quick question, is the expanded sidewalk part of this project cost or is that a separate cost?
So, it's not gonna be bid with this project. The DPW has an on-call paving contract where we, you know, basically get more commodity pricing, you know, so we're, we'll be doing, you know, quite a bit of sidewalk work and paving next spring. So, it only makes sense to really include this paid, this sidewalk work with that work where we'll get better pricing, but the cost of it will come from, you know, what's been allocated for the field. Does that make sense?
No, because I think at the beginning you said it wasn't part of the project cost, so.
Correct, it's, it's, it's not part of the bid project, so the contractor that does the work on the field will not construct the sidewalk. However, the funds that pay for the sidewalk are coming from the funding for the field.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Gary or Christina, any questions? Christina?
I do, so you said that you had correspondence with your parking engineer and your traffic engineer for sightlines. Is there a formal report? Can we, be given a copy of that?
No formal report at this, at this time. It was more of a desk, desktop exercise to look at it. We could certainly put something together, but their opinion was that, you know, just based upon what is already proposed, you know, if you didn't meet those sightline distances, you know, we are doing what that would be already, essentially. We're already with the belt and suspenders, with the activated beacons and, and additional signage.
I guess that was really my only concern when I visited the site. I mean, I, as a grown adult, was pretty nervous crossing that street, so I can't imagine a ten-year-old riding a bike being as diligent as maybe I am. So, I guess as the activated beacons, I know I have one on the corner of my property, the corner of my street, and it, it rarely works. But one that I do like is on like, what, sixty-two, that big bike trail downtown Danvers. That one is really in your face, and as much as I do not like these activated beacons, I really am adamant that this one really needs to be in your face. I'm really concerned about children crossing the street. I haven't seen anything that you've proposed, and the last time that these were coming up around town, I thought that maybe the planning board should have had a little bit of input on that, just to make sure our character, whatever that means, is consistent. So, do you have something in mind?
Uh, not specifically that I can share right now. I, I think we were thinking using the same one that has it, that is at Lincoln Street, you know, that style. We can certainly go to, I'm not familiar with the one on, on Route sixty-two, but I could certainly.
Or is it ninety-seven?
Not ninety-seven. There might be one on ninety-seven, but there's definitely one downtown Danvers that is very effective.
Yeah, we, we can certainly, you know, it, you know, it's open right now of how we can spec it, so it, you know, I can take a look at that one and if that's, you know, what the planning board would like to put there, that, that's certainly something that we can do.
Thanks.
Done? Yeah?
Um, yeah, I have a couple things. What's the width of Pine Street there compared to the minimum width that we have to maintain?
Uh, I'm not, give me two seconds. I don't know that off the top of my head, the actual width, but if I can measure quickly.
Because I'm talking about traffic slowing measures. I've often thought instead of just throwing speed limits on that street, we, if we had just painted the lines closer together and made it a more narrow street, that already slows down traffic. The width of that street's so wide, it encourages higher speeds.
You're talking about the fog lines?
What'd you call them?
Yeah, yeah, doing narrowing the lanes, you know, we have implemented that in other areas of town. I think it's hard in this location, just kind of given the, given the kind of narrow section of it is, of it, or the, you know, the limited area compared to the overall width of, of, or the overall length of Pine Street, you know, it'd be a much larger project to, to go back and, and re-line, you know, that large of an area of Pine Street.
Okay, well, it, it does sound like there's some impracticalities there, but it could be part of what could be considered. What about, what about school bus pulling off? Are you accommodating or anticipating one or even two school buses to pull over under the shoulder of the, I assume it's, it's not paved there, right? Of the sidewalk area?
We're, we're not expecting school buses to use this field anyways.
Ever?
Well, it won't be for high school level sports, so, no.
Is it a practice field?
I, I know it's not a standard field. Maybe the parks, and I'm not sure who just spoke, I can't even see.
Sorry, that was Cheryl Marshall.
Oh, okay, you, you don't anticipate there ever being a school bus to bring kids there?
I do not.
Okay, um, all right.
So, it looks like we have twelve-foot lane widths there with three-foot shoulder on the outbound side and two-foot shoulder on the inbound side. So, I'm calling thirty feet overall, total road width.
What's the minimum, just so I know?
Uh, eleven feet.
Okay, so there will be probably informal overflow parking on the sidewalk zone there in the shoulder of the road.
On the inbound side. The other side is sidewalk.
On the out?
With a curb.
With a curb.
That's what he said, so, no parking. Only on the inbound side, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
And that's only got a two-foot shoulder, he's saying, so.
Paved shoulder. There's, there's more area that's, you know, kind of gravel off the, off the shoulder, kind of, before you get to the actual tree line there.
So, you could park there.
I mean, I just think realistically, we should anticipate that and accommodate it as much as can. We know a lot of people are not gonna wanna go into a dead-end parking lot to, to try to drop off their kids. A lot of people are gonna cruise by, drop and go, it's just reality. And it can be accommodated, but if there's anything we can do to accommodate it better, we should scrutinize it.
We'll definitely be reaching out to the leagues that permit the fields to discourage that, like as it drop and go.
It's gonna happen.
That may happen, but they probably won't be parking there. And we'll discourage that with the leagues.
Yeah, maybe a sign, you know, drop off, well, no parking, I don't know. It's just something to consider in a special permit hearing. You might have a sign saying drop off only, you might not win, you might wanna just simply say no parking to not even encourage dropping off. You know they're gonna drop off and go, that's just how it's gonna function. I'm not saying this is bad, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
If there's signage we wanna take into account or any changes to that shoulder in terms of materials, whatever.
Yeah, if there was drop off, it would probably be where we parked for that site visit, I would think, and then walk across the street.
Nothing else.
But even then, it's kind of a.
When we were, when we were at that site visit, I mean, people did not go less than forty miles.
It was pretty quick, it was a little scary.
So, I kind of equate it to Sweeney, right, on Summer Street? And people don't go that fast on that section of Summer Street, because it's, I don't know why, but.
It's close to town.
It's closer.
It's also close to town.
So, I don't think you, at Sweeney, you have that same issue of driving, dropping on the street and going. You definitely pull into Sweeney, drop off, go.
Well, the other thing is that people going to the field are becoming outbound, not inbound, so they'd have to turn around, which they're not gonna wanna do, so my guess is they are gonna pull into the parking area.
They're gonna pull onto.
Turn around in Moses Hill and drop their kid off.
Yeah, and the kids, the people at Moses Hill are gonna start getting pissed off.
Come in through that little piece and then go home.
Yeah, so, isn't there, beyond Moses Hill, isn't there a small street there?
Yeah, there's another street that goes up.
And so, what's the likelihood of people parking there?
Good boy.
Um, it is, it's like a small private road? I think it's a private.
It's supposed to be a subject of public.
I don't know if it's pri- private or public, but.
It's a public car.
So, Nate, beyond Moses Hill, on the same side as Moses Hill, there's a street beyond it.
Yep.
What's the likelihood of A, people parking there for overflow parking, and B, swooping into Moses Hill if they're coming outbound and just doing the loop at Moses Hill, dropping their kid off, and then turning around and going back inbound?
It actually has a loop, that road has a loop.
Yeah, I, I think similar to Moses Hill, we would certainly par- post no parking signs, you know, for the field on Harrington Way, to eliminate that.
It's Harrington.
Harrington, yeah, Harrington Way. I, I don't know what we could do to, do to prevent, you know, pulling into Moses Hill and, you know, stopping people from do that, you know? You do see people do that already, to reverse direction. Yeah, this would certainly be more of it, you know, potentially. But, yeah, outside of signage, I'm not sure what you could do to, to eliminate that.
Yeah, I mean, signs are only gonna go so far. I think I, I, it's, it's a tricky spot is, is my concern with the, the speed that people go. Is there any, I'm sorry, is there any calming measures that you could put before the crosswalk?
I don't think we would wanna put any sort of like, speed bump or a speed table or anything to that effect, because I think it'll be an auditory disturbance, you know, for a majority, or, you know, full-time for the residents that are there, and especially for, you know, the, the portion of the year that the field is not in use, and then it's also gonna be a plowing issue during.
So, if it's, not necessarily a speed bump, but some kind of, something, different kind of pavement, rumble, I guess the rumble strip would make noise, right?
Yep, so we could do the, you know, the, the, what I mentioned earlier, the yield triangles or, you know, they, sometimes called like, they look like shark teeth, you know, that are another kind of visual, it's, you know, just painted triangles on the, on the ground.
Could you bulge the flagline a little bit, Nate, so that it just tightens up just when you get to the crosswalk?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that, Chris.
Can you, can you bulge in the flagline so you make it narrower, set a lane just at the crosswalk?
I, I, I think that would be hard, given the, so it is a twelve-foot lane now, I think we could only go down to an eleven, and I think that would be very awkward for that one kind of section of, of the road. I, I don't see it reducing speeds, you know, that significantly, if at all.
I have one last thing, and it's, just, since there are ten-year-olds, one idea was some kind of protection if there was a storm and parents needed to come. I know we're not, parents aren't far, but is there, I know you can't dig down, but maybe just some kind of like seasonal, like those? Yeah.
A bus stop thing?
Or maybe a bus stop thing, but more like a tent, so rain, lightning, sun, like those, almost look like sails, but they're like pegged in the ground somehow, but if you can't go down, I'm not sure if that's reasonable. Does that make sense?
Yep, yeah, that, that'd be definitely the issue, is we couldn't do any sort of foundation to, to, for that, I think it'd have to be more of a freestanding structure. We don't have currently anything in the plans for that, but I don't know if that's, you know, we could look into something like that, or I don't know if Cheryl had, has used other things like that elsewhere.
Have not, no. First time it's come up, but we can look into that for sure.
Sorry.
Okay, any comments from the public? I don't see any hands up. Same thing here, I think we'll continue. Do we need any further information from the DPW?
I mean, I would like to see those reports.
Nate, if you can get the reports.
Which reports?
Definitely traffic, and then the other one was parking. Sightlines and parking.
Were those memorialized or were they just?
I, I did.
No.
Well, Nate, you sent.
Sorry, sorry, go.
You sent me an email late today on sight distances.
Yep.
So, that can be included. Trying to think of what else. So, maybe if you provided a little more information, I mean, that's gonna be a standard pedestrian light?
Yeah, if you could find out a, a more of a, a s- more, a larger beacon for the pedestrian crossing, as described, if you could maybe take a ride up there, or I, I don't know where this one's located, but maybe you could do it by Google Earth, I don't know.
I'm sure we can get that info.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, the, the, the sightlines was just a desk, a desktop exercise. Yeah, so it wasn't a, they did not issue a memo, memo or anything along those lines, and, and same for the parking. It was, is really looked at within the scope of this project for the parking. They didn't do any, you know, analysis of, of the parking.
So, I guess if this was not a town project, we would ask maybe for peer review, so I guess for us to rely on that, maybe we can memorialize that?
How about, how about if we ask for the, how many parking spaces are in Mascanoma Park?
I just really would like to know what the industry standard is versus what we're approving, like, I mean, we're just kind of going with.
I thought she already stated with the industry standard.
I would do it by a flyover, by.
Cheryl, I thought Cheryl very clearly specifically stated the industry standard, stated that they made the parking lot to comply with.
I don't think she did say that at all.
I can get a char.
Thank you.
The char is.
She did not, she said she only wanted, if it was gonna be twenty-five spaces. Did not say that.
It's gonna be only five spaces.
I'm not sure the Mascanoma Park comparison is a fair comparison, because you've got a lot of boaters using that.
Well, it is.
And playground.
Sure, but if it's adequate for the, for the playing fields.
Right.
Maybe Sweeney, Sweeney might be better.
Why are you saying?
Neither of those parks were ever. Sweeney definitely doesn't have enough parking.
Nice, hard parking there.
Cheryl, I'm not judging, I just wanted something to say, this is what we looked at, we analyzed it, you did the best that you could with the site, just so our file is complete.
Yep, the engineers do that, but I'll, I'll see what I can get specific.
But usually we would get some kind of a report from them. Hmm? Absolutely, yeah. I mean, just so what, we said that we relied on something.
So, do we wanna have a motion to continue this?
Yes, I'd like to have a motion to continue the public hearing to November twenty-eighth, which I'm scheduling now three again on the same day. Hopefully, we'll have the time. At seven PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call Christina?
Yes.
Ms. Olley?
Yes.
Ms. Olley?
Yes. Yes.
Let's see, you heard?
Yeah.
Yeah, six-zero, Laura, she'll be back, she can comment on the trees, um, okay, same deal, uh, you know, uh, town clerk, uh, postal mail, requesting an extension, and, um, an email to Gail Hunter, requesting the extension.
This isn't an extension, it's a continuance.
Continuance.
So they shouldn't have to ask for anything, for continuance. This board has continued it to a dead time and date certain.
Then that's, that's different than what our former, uh, what our former secretary told us to do.
Oh, I'll bring you Mass General law for the next meeting.
Send it to Halyne.
Are you?
Ron, what we used to do was to ask the applicant for their permission to continue it, so that we were not, that extended the timeframe we had to make a decision, and we used to have them sign a little form saying they they extend, they give permission.
It has something to do with the clock, I think, yeah.
You have ninety days to hold a public hearing on, you're allowed ninety days from the opening of a public hearing.
Make your decision.
Yeah, so you're well within your timeframe.
Okay.
But we used to do that just in case we went further, just to give ours more than ninety days, if the applicant agrees, we used to just get them.
No, 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 I totally understand that, and I would not want a constructive grant based on the timeframe, but you're well within your timeframe.
Yeah, and we'll be able to get this done within our timeframe, most likely.
Okay.
Which is how we used to do it.
Yeah.
The continuance has been agreed to, okay, Sarah can jump back, thank you.
Thank you all.
Nate, it was a good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great reuse of the site, too.
The graphics were clear.
It'd be better as a DPW site.
Be better as a DPW site, but you can't dig more than twelve inches.
Okay, last thing I have is approval of minutes nine-twelve and nine-twenty-six, has anybody read them?
Nope.
Okay, perfect. Ms. Foley?
So, on the October twenty-four, is that what we're doing, I'm sorry, what are we doing?
Uh, well, Gail, um, is she on?
It is ten-twenty-four.
Okay.
It is nine-twelve and ten-twenty-four.
Okay, so at my, the, uh, top of my pile was ten-twenty-four, can I do that?
Yes.
Um, the first page, the last sentence, it says, um, garage parking will come in phase two with the addition of two hundred to three hundred square feet over multiple years, I think that's two thousand to three thousand square feet. Um, that was it. Was it in there? What was it?
Motion to accept the minutes of ten-twenty-four as amended.
That was even more than that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call? Yes?
Yes, you have enough, I didn't read, yes, I guess, yes.
Yes, four-zero, so no, oh, Sarah.
Yeah, sorry, um, it was two hundred thousand square feet.
That's what I was gonna say, it seems way more than that.
Thank you, Sarah.
Not too, it's twen- it's two hundred and three hundred thousand square feet.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, I was gonna say twenty thousand, I'm like, I don't think that was enough, exactly.
It was the husband and the kids wanted, two hundred after that.
That's what we already said, two hundred to three hundred, right, that's it, that's what we voted on.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute, um, just to give you a sense, the high school is a hundred and sixty thousand. But I, um, so with that, the modification that I'm making.
All right, so we'll, we'll amend it to those numbers.
So it was correct.
Thank you.
Two hundred to three hundred, hundred thousand.
Thousand, yeah, we just, you just.
Yeah, you had two hundred to three hundred square feet, and it's two hundred to three hundred thousand.
I thought I had a K there, sorry.
Okay, and nine.
A cent, yes.
Okay, and nine-twelve, Ms. Foley?
Um, the only thing I had on that is page one, two, three, middle of the page, it says Mr. Delicio, which should be Ms. Delicio.
Yeah, my husband wasn't here at that meeting.
Okay, uh, is that all you have for that?
I think that's all I have.
Anyone else have any changes?
No.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the minutes of nine-twelve as amended, Mr. Only?
Sure.
Second, I second, roll call, Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
And, uh, yes, four-zero.
That's my vote, yes.
Oh, and Sarah's, five-zero, sorry. Other matters, uh, not reasonably anticipated, anything, Sarah, more on this, anybody have anything?
I would just like to mention one thing, um, these, all the three hearings tonight, we have an application folder, so I'm like going back, and I can't even remember where we started these, like, can we start to get these in the right application folders, does that make?
Can we make an application folder on Sharepoint?
We have it, we have one.
Oh, we have one, can we move those in there, uh, Gail, or Becky, or somebody?
Of course we can move them in, as soon as I can figure out how to do Sharepoint.
You've been doing a lot of moving, Gail, I have too many, I have like a sending on it, and I'm not trying to figure out how to set it off, but I'm like, Gail, you're doing a lot of moving and changing, I'm like, oof, my inbox is full.
I haven't moved and changed anything, really, I can barely move anything.
I I don't know, I must have a hundred emails, Gail Hunters, change this, I don't know, all minutes. I had a question, um, did we ever get a, um, I think Sarah and Chris were gonna meet with, uh, Mr. Bobrowski, did we ever get what that meeting was?
We did meet with him today, actually, and we just went over the rules, he's gonna, uh, answer questions, uh, limited two minutes for anyone to speak, just wanted to make sure he understood all those ground rules.
Did he review the bylaws, since he hadn't seen them in?
Yeah, he was gonna, yes, and he's gonna review them again before.
So he didn't have any comments about?
No.
We had also informed him of town council's, uh, opinion about the civil majority for the ADU, um, bylaw.
For all of them, right?
And he didn't, he didn't disagree.
Yeah, it says, wait, it's a two-thirds vote for all the bylaws.
Not the, not the civil majority.
That's right.
Two-thirds.
Correct, correct, that's the failure for the ADU to meet the requirement for civil majority.
Right, as with all of them, right?
Correct.
That's correct, okay, I'll take a motion, just, uh, just a note, we may meet a special town meeting, uh, before, I'll send an email if there's a, some kind of an emergency that we need to, otherwise, we'll see you all at town meeting on Monday.
Um, Ron, on that question, I think if we're gonna meet, we should have our posting for the high school, and we should, uh, the hot posting should say we're not gonna have, uh, a Zoom component.
I'll, I'll put an agenda on to that effect, you're meeting in the community room.
Yeah, we're in the community room, which is where?
It's off the cafeteria, right off the.
Okay.
I I sent you directions, I will, I will send out the directions again.
Okay, I'll go down. No, 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 I'll find them.
Okay.
Do we sit on the stage?
Yes, we're sitting, we're sitting up front, all together at the table, yeah.
That's definite.
I think it's definite because it's in the high school auditorium, is what I, is my guess, so that's what Alan has, the planning board, we'll all sit together at a table, is what his plan is, I, I haven't.
We should probably be there by six.
When's it start?
Ron, Anne, Anne Harrison has her hand up.
Anne Harrison?
Um, when, when Alan spoke to the select board, uh, about the, the arrangement, um, the, he will be at the center of the stage, um, the select, the Greg and the town clerk will be to his immediate right, and the, um, select board will be further to his right, and the planning board will be to his left, and there will be a podium at, um, the left end, uh, for those who who want to speak and and don't want to speak from their position on the stage, at least that's my recollection, and thank you for recognizing me.
Why?
We have to wear masks.
Even when we're speaking?
No, not when we're speaking, but when we're there, otherwise you're.
That's, yes.
Otherwise you're in the cafeteria.
They wear, they don't wear masks in football games.
Or when they're in the auditorium, when they're on a football game.
I second the motion to adjourn.
Okay, yes, motion been made, seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you all.
Good night, thank you for a tremendous amount of work.